This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Morning, everyone. I'm pleased to welcome everyone to today's Governance Committee, Finance Committee, Audit Committee, and Regular Meeting of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District. As you may know, this is our makeup meeting for the March meeting, originally scheduled for March 14th, and will take place, and will take the place of our regular April meeting as well. For members of the public attending remotely, the agendas are available at hrbrrd.ny.gov under Board Minutes. We ask that you please close other programs on your computer or phone, silence yourself alone, and use your audio when not speaking. The conference organizer will monitor the program's chat function for public comment. We will begin with our Governance Committee this morning. So now I turn the meeting over to our Governance Committee Chair, Mr. Candido.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Governance Committee is called to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. First order of business is roll call, Mr. Leslie.
Alfred Candido.
Here.
Kenneth DeWitt.
Here.
Paul Allen.
Here.
Albert Hayes.
Here.
Board Chair Mark Finkel.
Here.
Board Members Richard Byrd and Timothy Reagan.
Here.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan.
Here.
Robert Leslie. Chief Engineer Robert Twelton.
Here.
Chief Fiscal Officer Timothy Manisha.
Here.
And Compliant Officer Stephanie Rezek.
Here.
All counted.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie. Now we need a motion to adopt, to revise the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you, so ordered. We need a motion for approval of the September 13th, 2022 Governance Committee Meeting Minutes. Take a motion, please.
You'll make that motion?
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered, thank you. Committee Business, we have new business. We have an annual review discussion and approval of our investment policy. Mr. Manisha, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the investment policy resolution on page five of your packet. I'd like to start by thanking my colleagues for reviewing each of the policies before the committee today and sharing their observations based on that review. There are no meaningful changes proposed for the investment policy. Investment audit report conducted as part of the Regulating District's annual financial statements audits last summer identified no issues that needed to be addressed. That said, this part of our world has seen quite a bit of volatility since we shared the board packet with you. On Monday, March 13th, I emailed to each of you an update on the safety of Regulating District Bank deposits and short-term investments. At this time, I'd like to update the update. Most of what I shared 16 days ago has not changed. The only aspect that needs a bit more explanation relates to the collateral protection for the Black River Area General Fund checking account at Community Bank. What I stated in my March 13th update was taken from the letter from the Office of State Controller designating Community Bank as an obligatory for the Regulating District back in April of 1997. That letter addressed, among other provisions, among other topics collateral provisions. We've investigated the collateral provisions in place now in 2023. We've received a revised agreement with Community Bank that clarifies the collateral provisions on this account. It will take us a few weeks to review this agreement, discuss it with OSE, and have Community Bank complete the processes. In the interim, we've asked OSE to sweep $25,000 from Community Bank to the Black River Area's debt account, bringing the available down below the $250,000 FDIC insurance threshold. We've also moved Hudson River Area funds to step, given the very significant increase in interest earnings available in comparison to a year ago. I can say more about our safeguarding and active management of Regulating District cash and short-term investments. But we'll pause before doing so to answer any questions you have about the investment policy or of the recent events surrounding this aspect of Regulating District operations.
Are there any questions? If no questions, we'll entertain a motion to advance to the full board and recommend approval of this investment policy.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I can second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Mr. Manisha, if you would continue on the discussion of the annual review and procurement policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the procurement policy resolution on page 11 of your packet. The overwhelming majority of the procurement policy remains unchanged from the version the board adopted when you were sections we have revised are in sections two, three, and six. The strike through is indicating police words and green shading indicated new language. Definition of procurement contract is the most noteworthy revision. Once changed, we amended other sections affected by this revision. These changes bring the procurement policy into greater alignment with the provisions of section 2879 of the Public Authorities Law that govern procurement contracts. Now, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the procurement policy.
Very good, thank you. We need a motion to advance the procurement policy to the full board.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second it.
All in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One more thing, Mr. Manisha, if you would continue on with the property guidelines policy.
If you do so, Mr. Chair, you can find the disposition policy resolution on page 35 of your packet. There are no meaningful changes proposed for the disposition of property guidelines. Over the years, we've worked closely with the State Office of General Services to disclose of any surplus property and anticipate continuing this practice. In April of 2022, OGS successfully disposed of the dump truck on the Regulating Districts we have. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the disposition of property.
We'll entertain a motion to approve and advance to the full board the property guidelines policy.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered, thank you. We now look at the annual review of the authority's mission statement and performance measures. Mr. Leslie, if you would please.
There is an annual requirement that we read and understand the mission statement. The mission statement has been first adopted and reaffirmed in 2007 and 2011. Was then, in 2012, pretty extensively revised to its current state based on significant input from the executive chamber. I would ask Mr. Callahan to read that. The mission of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District is to construct, maintain, and operate reservoirs in the upper Hudson River and Black River watersheds, including the Sacagawea, Indian, Black, Moose, and Beaver rivers, for the purpose of regulating the flow of streams or rivers when required by public welfare, including public health and safety. Regulating reservoirs operated by the Regulating District include Great Sacagawea Lake, Indian Lake, Stillwater Reservoir, Sixth Lake, and Old Forge. Benefits derived to the successful completion of the mission include, but may not be limited to, flood protection to the public corporations, parenthetical counties, and processes of real estate, parenthetical power plants, downstream upset impoundments, low-flow augmentation to provide sufficient water flow enabling downstream wastewater treatment plants to avoid increased treatment costs associated with waste discharge to lower volume rivers and enabling downstream hydroelectric plants to generate low-cost hydroelectric power in the hot summer months when rates are generally highest. Thank you very much. Now, the other aspect of today's review is to take a look at the performance goals, metrics, and a series of questions asked of the board with proposed answers. The performance goals, we believe we have accomplished each of those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 goals. Providing flood protection, adhering to the offer of settlement, staying within our operating plan for each reservoir, providing for public safety, providing public information pertinent to our mission, maintaining site facilities, managing the land we control, and maintaining certain financial status. There's a question among the board as to whether those goals have been accomplished in the last year.
I have a question on measurements, I guess. You know, typically, a goal's got to be measured by two things, measured moving across. So if you take a look at just safety, for example, the one measurement is the inspections. So it's inspections by various people, so that's a measurement. But it's one goal or one measurement. And so if you take a look at public feedback, it's the same type of a question, you know. So, and I don't know how much you want to get into that, but a goal is measured by two things. It's time, place, person, something that goes within inside of that. So I don't know how much we want to get into that or what. But I think I'd like if you have a goal, it's got to, I like it to be measurable going forward because that's the only way you can really track of how you're doing on it moving forward. But I'm hung up on it, everybody else is fine. Let's move on.
Yeah, Mr. Reagan, I know we've talked, you know, personally, you and I about doing a better job maybe with some dashboards and, you know, looking at to the extent you have goals that are incremental. When you process a certain number of permits, you maintain a certain number of facilities, and you put a number on that, work towards that, rather than this is sort of a pass/fail approach.
Again, I don't know, you know, I don't know how you guys do it, you know, from a goal standpoint.
And I think we are very much just adopting that pass/fail, we've done it or not. But it's, that's a less nuanced approach than, than I know, you know, you and I have talked about.
Yeah. My only issue with that, you guys, you keep it as you want it, whatever, it doesn't matter. But when we get into doing the evaluation that we went through, there was a question on why I evaluated some things the way I did. And I evaluated them because I didn't see the worst measurements to go in forward. So I'm absolutely fine with it. If this is good with everybody, I'm good. So I think we're good, we can move on.
Okay.
Glad you're back.
Was there anything else, Mr. Leslie?
Only, there's, there's a list of five questions. Have the members acknowledged that they've read and understood the mission of the intended authority? You just recited that. I think it is pretty clear, based on that mission statement, as to what we actually do. The power to appoint the management of the public authority rests with the Regulating District Board. They're in the bylaw. There is a policy the board follows when appointing said management. The board is the primary policymaker as it establishes a role for management to implement the mission and follows the environmental conservation law. There's a breakout of who has certain responsibilities. And then the final question is, have the board acknowledged that they have read and understood the responses to each of the foregoing questions? I have a page that I have, if they're okay with that, indicated. We can verbally, for those that are remote, acknowledge an X, and everybody else can sign as we go forward. So is that okay with you, Mr. Candido?
That's fine with me.
That we adhere, so question is, you acknowledge, you've read and understood the responses to the questions noted earlier on page 42. I can give you a checkmark.
Yes.
And Mr. DeWitt?
Yes.
Miss Allen?
Yes.
And I'll have the other four who are in this room acknowledge that with their signature. At that point, that ends that review of the mission statement and performance.
Thank you. We need a motion to accept, we, do we need, we need a motion to advance this to the full board?
Yes.
Yes, so I need a motion to advance to the full board.
I will make that motion.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Leslie, we have a resolution in front of us approving the Seventh Amendment to the Ground Lease and Water Usage Agreement at Stillwater, if you please.
Sure, on page 44, there is a Seventh Amendment to the Ground Lease and Water Usage Agreement at Stillwater. That is strikingly similar to previous amendments to this reservoir operating agreement. As we have moved forward, the current agreement is set to expire tomorrow. The, barring a new agreement, the original agreement requires that we purchase the existing plant for its fair market value. The board established, or the board hired an appraiser who established a market value. Stillwater hired their own appraiser who established a different value. Those two appraisers, per the agreement, then agreed upon a third appraiser who has completed their review of those two appraisals and determined that the Regulating District's valuation was appropriate and based on sound judgment, but that the Stillwater appraisal's valuation did not meet all the requirements of an appraisal report for that property type. That appraiser then solicited from us authority to move forward with a final appraisal and was granted that authority. Stillwater paid the fee, and we are now awaiting that final report, which I expect within a week. We ought to have a final valuation as to what the Stillwater plant is actually worth. This Seventh Amendment to the ground lease would extend by an additional three-month period the existing ground lease on its current terms in order that we can come up with that final number and begin the process to actually secure the plant from Stillwater and get the approval from the Office of State Controller that we will acquire.
Counselor, if I may, at any point, you know, given the less favorable number from the perspective of Stillwater Associates, they could also say, let's do, we want to come back to the table and do another, a new long-term agreement. They could find a buyer other than us and sell directly. But absent those things happening, the agreement does require us to acquire the plant.
Yes. But the, if they sold it to a third party, not us, then the issues with the headwater, I guess is what you call it, right? Is that what you call it? That's ours, and so we control that, so nothing changes on that.
So the real property, defer to counsel here, the real property is still owned by the state under our jurisdiction. The subsequent operator of the plant would have to reach an agreement with us to operate the plant, just like Stillwater Associates did 35 years ago or so.
Right. So a third party's not going to be too quick to jump into that without having a pretty good idea of what the state and everybody's going to do as far as allowing them to have the water.
Yeah, and what I think is, to the benefit of somebody coming in and looking at this, we've done a lot of valuation now, and as anybody knows, you know, we're not, we're not just requir, we're, it's simple, right? Mr. Leslie, under Public Authorities law, we're just required to get fair market value.
Right.
So it would be not, it's not like we can hold an operator up at, or about to have a porters award set up. But it's not as if we could just ask for some exorbitant fee. It would be fair market value, and then we'd be more than willing, as we are with Stillwater Associates, to enter into a long-term agreement with another subsequent operator.
And if we purchase it, the money comes from?
Great question, and something that Mr. Manisha and the rest of the executive team
Your interest that you're getting on that money.
Have been talking an awful lot.
Sure, in that regard, the rates are a little higher than they were a year ago. But in all their ways, I mean, we find the money is required by the agreement, and we'd be all sharpening our pencils to figure out where it comes from.
As we've said for the better part of a couple of years now to Stillwater Associates and in this room, not our first choice for obvious reasons.
We would, so this resolution is just to extend the agreement for three months?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. If we come back in two months and either purchase it.
Hopefully, within those three months, we will have either purchased the plant or entered into a new long-term agreement with Stillwater or what provides it from Stillwater to operate the plant.
What's your feeling, how this is going to go?
You know, I've, I've, I've taken an educated guess on Brookfield, and that's gone very differently than I would have thought, and so I hazard it.
Okay.
I guess I'm reluctant to hazard a guess on this one. But it would be, obviously, one of the things that we didn't have a couple of years ago, maybe when we started negotiations with Stillwater Associates, is a, is a really good thoroughly, thoroughly examined independent valuation of the improvements on the site. That is probably helpful to get into one resolution or another.
Are there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve and advance to the full board this resolution, adopt approving of Seventh Amendment to the Ground Lease Usage at Stillwater. Motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered, thank you. Mr. Callahan, we have two resolutions that you're going to present that authorize you as the executive director to hire the most qualified candidate for the maintenance specialist position at the Hudson River, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If the members have had an opportunity to review this resolution, it's a backfill for Mike Chase, who was promoted to Assistant Foreman just about a year ago on March 31st, 2022. This comes after some discussion with the Operations Manager here, Matt Kinter, about where best we have three current maintenance and operations vacancies. We're only seeking to backfill one of those, and this is the one that affords us the greatest flexibility and is obligated to test over the years here in the workforce where most of the work is based and the greatest flexibility is required. Of course, this does not get anywhere near the, the compliment that you were working with during your, during your working years, Albert, but it's, I think, a reasonable step to build in a little more capacity to the workforce. And so with that, I'll just pause for any questions any of the members might have.
If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion to advance this to the full board.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, we have a resolution to hire temporary seasonal laborers to supplement permanent staff in the Hudson River area and the Black River area. If you please explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board is aware, we do supplement our permanent workforce each year with seasonal workforce. We've increased in the last few years from four to six to afford greater flexibility and also reflective of the fact that it is very rare these days where we can find a seasonal worker and employ, employ him or her throughout the course of the entire season, having to onboard people and sort of in shifts with the labor market the way it has been. So it's been problematic. We also have worked hard, as we are down one permanent employee in the Black River area, to identify a seasonal worker in the Black River area as well to supplement their efforts. And that, that has proved to be a challenge, certainly. This flexibility allows us to seek such a person again this year. So if the board has had an opportunity to review the resolution, we'd ask for support on this item as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to advance this to the full board, please?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. That concludes the resolutions before the Governance Committee. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I think I had two motions, so I'll count one. All in favor, adjourn. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're adjourned. Mr. Chair? The chair is next.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Audit Committee. Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to
At this time, I'd like to call the Audit Committee to order. They have a roll call. Mr. Leslie, please.
Committee Chair, Albert Hayes.
Here.
Committee Member, Kenneth Dewitt.
Here.
Committee Member, Richard Byrd.
Here.
Board Chair, Mark Finkel.
Here.
Board Members, Alfred Candito and Nicole Allen.
Here.
Here.
Board Member, Timothy Reagan.
Here.
Executive Director, John Callahan.
Here.
General Counsel, Robert Leslie here. Chief Engineer, Robert Fulton.
Here.
Chief Fiscal Officer, Timothy Menicha.
Here.
And with my apologies for getting this wrong the first time, the Director of Administrative Services, Stephanie Erlich.
Here. No worries.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leslie. This time, I'd like to have a motion to adopt or revise the meeting agenda.
I will.
I have a first, you know, because I'd like to have a second.
I second this one.
I think-
In this committee?
You're not, you're not.
Mr. Byrd?
Sorry, I was willing to help you. I get beat down, so.
Mr. Dewitt or the Chair?
Thank you. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Moving on. We take the approval of the October twelfth, 2022 Audit Committee Meeting Minutes. We get a motion on that? Do I have a motion on that?
I will.
Mr. Byrd, do you have a second?
Do you have a second? Committee Chair or Mr. Dewitt?
Mr. Dewitt, would you like to second that?
I will second that.
Delayed. Thank you. Now we are under committee business and in a new business. We have a resolution to audit this financial statement. We have a motion to approve and advance to the full board and a resolution to award audit services work to Galarus Robinson Certified Public Accountants LLP for the fiscal year ending June thirty, 2023. Mr. Menicha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before proceeding to the resolution, I was hoping to take a minute to just explain the reason for the revisions to the Regulating District's audited financial statements that I mentioned in the CFO report. The need for this revision arose because an individual working in the Office of the State Controller was reviewing our financial statements. She was doing so because the Regulating District is considered a discreetly presented component unit of the state of New York, as it reads on the cover page of our audited financial statements. Dozens of other public benefit corporations are similarly considered as they like the Regulating District, are legally separate tax-exempt entities and meet other criteria spelled out in Gatsby Statement Number Thirty-nine. In a nutshell, OSC raised a question about a number in the Regulating District's original statement of net position and the way it was described in Note Nine relating to pensions. We're fortunate that OSC did ask this question because the inconsistency between the statement and the note was real and required correcting. The internal review of this statement and note by both the auditors and by me regrettably did not catch the inconsistency. The inconsistency arose in no small measure because regulations promulgated to accompany Section twenty-eight oh-two of the Public Authorities Law, a statute that requires completion and submission of independently audited financial statements by state authorities, stipulates that they be submitted to the authorities' budget office no later than ninety days after the close of the fiscal year. For a smaller complicated entity like the Regulating District, this deadline is a manageable challenge. For context, research published last year by the Government Finance Research Center at the University of Illinois Chicago and Merit Research Services found that municipal bond issuers typically take one hundred and forty to one hundred and sixty days to complete their audited financial statements. As I mentioned in my report, correcting these errors should not affect the auditor's opinion, which remains clean or unmodified in audit terminology. The latter number and all the other corrected figures are included in the multi-year financial report that we will review when the finance committee meets and the corrected information has been published on the Regulating District website and filed with the authorities' budget office. I've also spoken with Galarus Robinson about modifications to our audit process and timeline to ensure that even more time will be available to conduct a last review before the audited financial statements are finalized. I have great confidence that these modifications will be successful in preventing similar errors while not sacrificing the timeliness of our reporting to the authorities' budget office. Let me pause and ask if there are any questions and I will also say that if anyone desires a more technical, meaning accounting-intensive explanation, I'm happy to provide that at your convenience.
Tim, if I understand that right, we were just- Is that what you said?
Nope, we weren't late, but in our efforts to meet the required ninety days, we go through a number of iterations and in those iterations, before getting to final, this inconsistency, it just escaped both the auditors and it escaped me.
What was the inconsistency?
So that will take us into the technical, meaning accounting-intensive explanation, which I'm happy to do at your convenience.
Yeah, yeah, we don't do it here. So was it the number in the massage likely or what was it?
Yeah, so-
I mean, just top line, no big deal.
As I mentioned in my summary, it did take the amount of revenue, net revenue for the Regulating District from a positive four million to roughly a positive three million and that is because of-
So let's follow up.
Yeah.
Not now, yeah.
Happy to do it.
Do we have any questions on this? I guess we have a motion on the floor to approve and advance to the full board a resolution to award audit services work to Galarus Robinson Certified Public Accountants.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I think Tim did just the first item and has not yet provided the explanation on the second, which you already introduced. Is that, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I was going to ask if I could impose just before asking for discussion or motion or that kind of thing. So you can find the resolution for this on Page Nine of the supplemental packet. So I'll give everybody a second to get to that. Page nine of the supplemental packet.
Before the-
Good?
Is that right?
Everyone got that?
Towards the back.
Not wrong. You've got-
Here we go. Okay, I got it.
Oh, whoa, okay. Lot of moving parts.
This was a resolution which would normally be scheduled in April that moved up a couple of weeks.
Since we're not doing April, since I'm doing April today. Okay, so on this relates to this resolution. Two years ago, the board approved Resolution twenty-one dash fifteen dash oh-four to engage Galarus Robinson to perform independent auditing services for the Regulating District. Their resolution gave us the flexibility to extend the agreement twice, each time by another year. With this resolution, we seek authorization to exercise the second and final of the two one-year options so Galarus Robinson can perform the audit for the current fiscal year. At twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars plus an allowance of up to twelve hundred dollars for travel expenses if they are needed, this represents a roughly two percent increase from the cost for the last fiscal year. Before turning this back to you, Mr. Chair, let me also say that I recommend that the Regulating District put forth a competitive procurement for independent auditing services upon completion of the audit for the current fiscal year. So it remains in compliance with the provision of Section twenty-eight oh-two of the Public Authorities Law requiring rotation of auditors every five years. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about this resolution.
Does that mean we have to find another accountant after, when they're done?
We're required to procure and to do some rotation. It doesn't mean that Galarus Robinson could not bid.
Oh, okay.
But they would have to bid and they would also have to rotate to a different partner for the work and probably supporting staff that also works on the audit in order to be considered.
Oh, okay. Got you. And the only other question is when they do the audit review, we're going to try to do that a little bit different than over the-
So we've already talked about starting, so historically, we have, it's our fiscal year ends on June thirty. We kick off the audit usually in the last week of July and we've already talked about backing that up by a week and they do, they can't look at every transaction that we go through over the course of twelve months before they sample and we've talked about moving some of that sampling, which is a labor-intensive exercise on both their part and ours, moving that back to the end of June. All aimed at building in a little bit more time in September when we're looking over every last word and every last punctuation and every last number, obviously.
And Tim, also, we talked about when the results are presented to the board, that'll be in person. We'll try to schedule that with the-
Certainly.
So everybody's physically present.
Yes, yes.
Better allow better question and answer.
Go through the Audit Committee meeting when it meets again to review and hopefully improve the audit. All things like everything that we do here, I think we're continuously seeking to learn and to improve and to, you know, create more value for you and people that we serve.
Is there any more questions? I think we're just going to meet you. Now again, we're going to bring this to a motion to approve and advance to the full board a resolution to award audit services work to Galarus Robinson Certified Public Accountants LLP for fiscal year ending June thirty, 2023. Can I have a motion on that?
I will.
Mr. Byrd and Mr. Dewitt.
Mr. Dewitt, second.
Yep, second.
All in? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? I guess now and we guess for the adjournment.
It's this turn.
You said, we are in adjournment.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Next and finally for committees, we have the Finance Committee. I call on Mr. Dewitt.
Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to apologize for the background noise. There's some construction going on in the building and it began at ten o'clock. As a meeting came to order. I'll try to mute my mic when I'm not talking. But at this point, I'd like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Leslie.
Committee Chair, Kenneth Dewitt.
Here.
Committee Member, Albert Hayes.
Here.
Committee Member, Timothy Reagan.
Here.
Board Chair, Mark Finkel.
Here.
Board Member, Richard Byrd.
Here.
Board Member, Alfred J. Candito, Jr.
Here.
Board Member, Nicole Allen.
Here.
Executive Director, John Callahan.
Here.
General Counsel, Robert Leslie here. Chief Fiscal Officer, Timothy Menicha.
Here.
Chief Engineer, Robert Fulton.
Here.
And the Director of Administrative Services, Stephanie Erlich.
Here.
Everybody is on the floor.
Can I have a motion to adopt or revise the meeting agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I will second that.
Any discretion? All in favor?
Aye. That's right.
Opposed? Motion approved. Can I have the approval of the November ninth, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting Minutes?
I make that motion.
I will second that.
Mr. Reagan, Mr. Hayes.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion approved. Can I have a motion to advance to the full board and recommend adoption of a resolution approving budget and finance plan requirement pursuant to Section twenty-eight oh-one of the Public Authority Law? Mr. Menicha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the projected multi-year financial plan on Pages fifty-three and fifty-four of your packet. The memo and the resolution immediately proceed. You may recall from prior years, this multi-year financial plan, including its format, is required by law, as the chair said, of New York State Public Authorities. So going across the top of the plan, actual 2022 represents financial data taken from the Regulating District's audited financial statements as revised as we just discussed in this Audit Committee meeting. Moving down to column on the left, the individual revenue and expenditure items differ somewhat from the items the Regulating District uses, but the bottom lines for revenue expenditures and excess or efficiency, that's still found in the Regulating District's audited financial statements. Current year estimated 2023 represents the second year of the financial plan adopted by the board in June 2021, adjusted for year-to-date results for the first eight months of the fiscal year and our best projections for revenue to be received and expenditures to be made through June three. Proposed 2024 represents the third year of the financial plan as adopted by the board in June 2021. Proposed 2025, 2026, and 2027 represent projections arrived at by applying inflationary increases to the figures from prior years and making other adjustments based on current expectations for specific revenue and expenditure items.
Tim, what is another use for inflation?
So use different numbers in different categories, but something approximating our current experience with inflation in the five, five and a half, six percent.
For all three years?
If you sum the excess or deficiency of revenues and capital contributions over expenditures for the years twenty-five, 2025 through 2027, you will arrive at a largely balanced financial plan in those odd years. Let me reemphasize that these figures represent our projections at this time. Almost certain that each figure in this financial plan will change as we move over time from projection to actual. Let me stop here and offer answering any questions any of you have about this projected financial plan.
I have none.
The chair may be muted.
Mr. Dewitt?
Yep.
Can I have a motion to address, advance to the full board and recommend adoption of a resolution approving budget and financial plan required pursuant to Section twenty-eight oh-one of the Public Authority Law?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reagan?
I will second that.
Mr. Ray? Mr. Reagan?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, opposed? Motion approved. And that concludes the Financial Committee Meeting Agenda. And I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. We are adjourned, and thank you for the quiet in the building.
Thank you very much. We don't have to change recordings or anything.
No, sir.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order. Mr. Leslie, roll call.
Board Chair Mark Finkel.
Here.
Board Members Albert Hayes.
Here.
Richard Byrd.
Here.
Timothy Reagan.
Here.
First Vice Chair Kenneth DeWitt.
Here.
Second Vice Chair Alfred J. Candido Jr.
Here.
And Board Member Nicole Allen.
Here.
John Callahan.
Here.
Robert Leslie.
Here.
Robert Fulton.
Here.
Timothy Minucha.
Here.
And Stephanie Rezicki.
Here.
All accounted for.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to adopt the meeting agenda. A motion? I'll make that motion.
Second?
I will.
Mr. Bird?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think there's a little delay there. I see nobody in the building here or on screen.
You can pause, Mr. Chair, and ask Megan Cole if she's had any notes from anybody wishing to address the board, who may be on an audio connection only.
I have no requests.
Okay, so we have no guests or public comments, period. I need the approval of the January 10, 23 Regular Board Meeting Minutes.
I make that motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion or corrections?
Mr. Reagan, Mr. Hayes?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Call on our Executive Director, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and recognition of our robust agenda and promises to keep and miles to go before we sleep. I'll just note a couple of things from my report, which can be found on pages 64, 65. One, we certainly await word on the New York State budget, as reported earlier to the board. The governor's proposed budget had our previous appropriation of $40 million for Cocteau Dam reappropriated, and additionally proposed an additional appropriation of $20 million, which also came with some new language allowing us to use some of that money for work at Old Forge and Six Lake. So very good news for us, essentially bringing us to, from a lot of fiscal uncertainty just a few years ago, to essentially having a financial plan to address all of our capital infrastructure.
Does that change the timetable on that project?
It doesn't change the timetable, and certainly Cocteauville, the Cocteauville Dam project, as the board is aware, is being undertaken by the state of New York proper and run by the Office of General Services, working closely with the engineering consultant Bergman, who we'll hear from today on a different project, although Mr. Fulton is and Mr. Moser, of course, heavily engaged on that project. I listen in as well every two weeks on those calls, but so the timeframe is not impacted by this, by the budgetary news that we're waiting for, but it's good news that we await, we hope, in the final enacted budget. Obviously, keep the board apprised of any developments there. Just want to report out also on the culmination of another successful permit renewal season. Not as successful as we'd hoped with use, increase in use of the online permit system, and this gets maybe Mr. Reagan into our conversation about how certain things are measured. Here, we were hoping to get to 60% of all renewals processed electronically. Over the 56.6% we saw last year, we had growth of about 2% to 58.5% as of yesterday, with 200, excuse me, 2,732 permits renewed online for over a quarter million dollars in revenue. That's great, but we wanted to see some more growth, so we're working closely with Stephanie Rezicki, who's our point on the online system, looking at new ways to get more people excited about the system and understand how easy it is to use, and also sort of taking a step back and rethinking about the pace at which we'll transition away from mailed renewals for online subscribers. So all of that certainly very much, very much in play as we, as we look forward. And just also want to briefly note that the Great Sauk and Dogga Lake Advisory Council, this was an initiative of former Board Member Rosenthal to have new waterproof charts printed for Great Sauk and Dogga Lake, not something that was really within the board's purview, but we worked with the Advisory Council to do an initial run last year of about 2,000 of these, and they voted to do another 5,000 this year. So we'll be updating and printing those. Again, not the regulating district proper, but in partnership with the Advisory Council, so that's good news. That's enough, I think, for me to pause and take any questions that members may have. Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, comments, or the director, Mr. Callahan? If not, thank you very much. Moving on to contracts and actions, we have a few of them. First one is resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a multi-year agreement with Logical Net, a managed service provider, MSB, and cybersecurity services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the members have had an opportunity to read the memo on the resolution, this, we're at an intersection of our expiring agreements. We have more than one unique agreement with Logical Net for the various types of services they provide, and a greater focus within the New York State government world on cybersecurity. We've participated in a number of exercises over the last year designed to ensure that we have a robust enough environment to guard against a sort of cyber attack that is out there threatening day in and day out, agencies and other entities, and that we've experienced here. So we have asked Logical Net for new proposal, which not only includes those improvements, but covers the fit out of our new Hudson River area office space in Albany and a few other one-time costs, and we'd asked the board to, for its support on this resolution. Applause for any questions the members may have.
Do you, do you have a price on this?
Mr. Chair, it's going to be $10,255 for one-time costs associated with this agreement, recurring monthly cost of $1,684.10, and over the 36-month term, we had asked the board to approve a not-to-exceed number of $73,964.50.
Okay, do we have?
Just, is this a bid? With that amount of money, is that a bid? Or it's pretty much who you take because it's somebody that everybody says, hey, this is the one we want to go with?
Well, in this case, Mr. Reagan, it's the entity that's currently providing these services. We did switch at one time from Tag Solutions to Logical Net, but we have a number of, a number of, I won't say proprietary, but they are ingrained sort of in all of our various systems at this point. So we do not, this was not a competitive bid situation, and the annual cost is, the monthly cost, rather, is $1,684.10, which does represent a slight increase, but on certain things, within their proposal, like email, the unit price came down a little bit, but there are other tools that we're going to get in terms of cyber protection that are, that are more expensive, so it's a trade-off. Tim, would you add anything? I'm sorry. I would, in addition to that, at less than $50,000 per year, it falls under discretionary procurement threshold that is established for us and all of the other state entities out there. As John was saying, if you, if you compare, what are we paying in this, under this proposal for what we are currently getting from them, it's a reduction of about 9.4%, kind of apples to apples there. The real increase in cost over what we currently pay is for the additional protections from cybersecurity threats, many of which resulted from a review by the state as to our risks and opportunities to be, to be more protective of our IT infrastructure.
Okay. You need a resolution to authorize the executive director to execute the agreement? A motion? Want a motion on that?
Yep.
Take a motion on that?
Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Reagan?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, I need a resolution to accept Amendment Number Four to the Hensington Durham and Richardson Architecture and Engineering contract at the Cocteauville Dam, fourth Part 12D, independent safety inspection. And I hope your explanation is shorter than we respect.
I'll try to keep it short. Mr. Chairman, thank you. My memorandum is on page 83. It is a continuation of previous memorandum for previous amendments to this contract. So, but the amendments thus far are, and as well as this request for amendment, are related to the potential need to review and/or update our site-specific probable maximum flood and precipitation calculation for the Great Sauk and Dogga Lake. That came out of the Part 12 safety inspection back in 2019. And we're at the point now where we're going to finally compare the last two or two storms in the last 20 years that might have impact on the calculation of that site-specific probable maximum precipitation calculation. And FERC has reviewed the screening process and a technical memorandum that HDR put together for us, which came out of the last amendment to this contract, and has concurred with the recommendations of HDR. And so HDR has provided us a scope of services and a fee to perform the work necessary to complete the secondary evaluation of those storms that might have a potential to impact Great Sauk and Dogga Lake's site-specific probable maximum precipitation study, and they propose to complete the work for a not-to-exceed fee of $17,000. And their proposal is attached, and staff recommends acceptance of HDR's proposal to complete the work necessary to respond to FERC's recommendation and seeks board authorization to amend the contract scope and fee and to authorize the executive director to execute an amendment which increases the price of the contract by $17,000 to a not-to-exceed amount of $179,840. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion for Number B, which I don't want to read yet. Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a resolution to authorize the purchase of a security camera system at the Sauk and Dogga Field Office, Mr. Lick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My memorandum can be found on page 88, followed by the proposal by GNES Solutions, and the resolutions on page 92. I hope the board has the opportunity to review the proposal. Just as a quick recap, the alarm system at Sauk and Dogga Field Office is antiquated and failing. The existing system consists of CPAD and motion sensors. A more robust system is required to ensure staff and property safety. The operations manager and I am that representative from Logical Net, wired IQ, full chemical electric, and GNES Solutions. Additionally, we reviewed off-the-shelf system that staff install, which is that the system offered by GNES Solutions is the most appropriate for our security needs, and we would request that the board authorize the resolution to move forward with the GNES proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There's a security system here now?
Well, you can see the sets are up in the corner with the paper taped. That's been used since 1973. It's limited, it's limited. And we don't, all we know, when it does work, I'll defer to Stephanie Rezicki, obviously is much more familiar with it, but all we know is that something set it off. The camera system will allow us to see what did, whether it's something to be concerned about.
So the security system that you've got now is just monitoring? Is the purpose of it?
We have an alarm system right now. The alarm system, it's just a sensor. If someone breaks in, it'll go off. Unfortunately, the way it's positioned, birds fly by, it goes off. Someone walks by, it goes off. It's not a very secure system. Additionally, we're not here nice on the weekends, and we have reports from DEC and the state police who are here on the weekends, that this is a very frequented use area for the public, and they brought to our attention, it'd be nice to have security cameras here in light of the accident that happened with the state trooper last year. They were like, can we see your cameras? We don't have cameras. So knowing that we needed to do something with the system that's not working, and also cameras would be a better option, we decided to go with a security camera alarm system.
So basically, it's a surveillance, is what the system's for. So, but you're not, you're not, whatever the right terminology is, you're not fixing the place so a mass murderer can't get in?
We are not, we're not.
I know that sounds crazy.
No, but we have the security, the camera footage afterwards to be able, you know.
We'd be able to determine who it was.
Correct. I mean, we're not putting up, you know.
I just, I don't know where the hell we're all going.
I know, I know.
I think the term may be hardening.
Hardening, yeah.
And we're not, this is a, this is a monitoring and surveillance system which gives us greater, I think, utility and flexibility than what we have now, but we're not doing any physical
No hardening.
Facility hardening.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, I have one. So who gets notified when the system is, detects motion inside the building?
Staff.
The staff, okay. Does the staff who gets notified, do they have the technical ability to look at the cameras remotely so they can determine?
Yes. It'll be housed here.
Okay.
But the person who gets called won't be able to look on the camera and see who it is?
No, I do believe we have, we have the ability to remote in.
That should, that should.
Just, I was just curious what it was going to be able to do. Because the majority of the alarm system, somebody breaks in or tries to break in, you know, that is monitored through the sheriff's department.
Well, the current system we have, if it goes off, the sheriff's department is notified. I'm the contact person for that, and I haven't ever, maybe once, we were notified. I don't know that the system's even working right now and that they would notify anybody. That was what kind of started this whole thing, that all the sensors are blocked because they're going off left and right.
I keep telling you, there's white paper in the building.
Could we have a motion to purchase a security camera system?
I will, I'll second it.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have a resolution to amend the agreement with Fiscal Advisors and Marketing Incorporated in connection with the issuance of debt-to-finance capital process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can find the resolution on page 94 of your packet. You can find the resolution on page 94 of your packet. We sought to receive board approval to enter into an agreement with fiscal advisors and marketing in January 2020 via resolution 20-02-01. The amount of that agreement was not to exceed $14,625, and we anticipated issuance of bonds at that time in 2021. As the circumstances associated with the first public sale of bonds by the regulating district since 1989 have evolved, the anticipated issuance has gotten pushed back to later this year. And as I explained in the reso, we have relied heavily on the expertise of fiscal advisors as we assembled the debt team, converted the short-term financing with EFC into a long-term arrangement, and have begun planning for the anticipated bond sale later this year. As such, we seek this amendment to continue our beneficial relationship with fiscal advisors and ensure sufficient funds to compensate them for their fine work. Happy to answer any questions you have about this resolution.
Any questions, comments? If not, a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Any further discussion? In that case, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Next, we, oh, okay. Next, we have a resolution to amend the agreement with Harris Beach Limited Liability Corporation to provide bond counsel services in connection with the anticipated issuance of serial bonds. Mr. Menesh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can find the resolution on page 96 of your packet. Similar to the circumstances I described with respect to the prior resolution, legal basis for our conversion of short-term financing with EFC to long-term and the anticipated upcoming sale of bonds has required much more legal research and analysis than was anticipated when we competitively procured bond counsel services in November 2021, when the board authorized agreement with Harris Beach in an amount not to exceed $30,000 via resolution 22-04-01. Back in 2017, the agreement with EFC was structured as a general obligation of the regulating district. Based on this, we published a request for proposals for bond counsel services that envisioned a simple conversion to a long-term arrangement with EFC, as well as a straightforward sale of general obligation bonds down the road. Harris Beach began to dig into the regulating district's EFC agreement, governing statute, and surviving prior bond documents. It determined that an unlimited pledge of security for this or any other financing would not be possible. We chronicle all of this at the November 22 board meeting, when we asked the board to adopt a trust indenture and for supplemental indenture to govern and provide the legal basis for the EFC and future financing. As the circumstances associated with these financings have evolved, legal research and analysis anticipated in the bond counsel procurement has become much more complicated and time-consuming. As such, the original not to exceed amount has become insufficient, so we seek this amendment to continue our beneficial relationship with Harris Beach through the anticipated financing for the Indian Lake project and allocate additional funds to compensate them for their fine work. We stop here and offer to answer any questions you have about this resolution.
Any questions, comments? If not, a motion to amend the agreement with Harris Beach?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? In that case, all in favor? Any opposed? Next, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of $11,015 to purchase a dump trailer for the Hudson River area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution speaks for itself. By and large, we did traditionally maintain two dump trucks here at the Sackin Dogga Field Office. As Tim referenced on disposal policy review, we've surplus one of those that did not meet current emission standards. And rather than go out and add another dump truck back, which we don't really believe is necessary, in discussion with staff, we thought a dump trailer might be the appropriate and most flexible tool to get in the toolbox, who will also help us transport some of the equipment rather than having to use the lowboy trailer. So, with that, we would ask the board support on this, and I'll just pause for any questions the members may have. Any questions or comments? All right, a motion to authorize the expenditure of $11,015 to purchase a dump truck.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Last contract, resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to $5,500 for moving expenses related to the relocation of the Hudson River area office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll recall, the board in September authorized new space for the Hudson River area office in Albany. I want to congratulate Stephanie Rizicky, our Director of Administrative Services, and Mr. Leslie, Mr. Meneshia. There are a lot of folks that have had a laboring or lent to this effort. But finally, we got the approval we have long sought from the Office of State Controller, allowing us to execute lease for the new space, and now it's time for us to move. We use Don's Moving and Storage in the past. They are the designated office of general services contractor for this region. They've provided a quote in the amount of $5,382 for the move, and we've just provided just a little bit of buffer there if needed for one or two things. If they come up, asking the board to authorize up to $5,500 for that, this expense, and pause here for any questions the members may have.
These new offices, are they in the first, second, or?
Third floor or what?
Fifth floor.
What, fifth floor?
What is the new floor?
How many elevators?
Out of the flood plain.
Importantly. So, what's the address? The new office is 54 State Street. Just as a reminder to the members, the building that we currently are in, Kirnen Plaza, 575 Broadway, it is being sold by Fuller Road Management Group, which is a subsidiary of SUNY Poly, and a developer is going to come in. They have a single tenant lined up for the entire building. So, the schedule for that process has actually moved much slower than originally anticipated, giving us a little extra time, which it turns out we needed to get approval from OSC on the contract. So, but we've enjoyed our time there, albeit brief, and we're looking forward to our new, our new facility. Very good. So, I need a resolution authorizing that expenditure of $5,500.
And we can't use our new lowboy and give those guys moving a half, half the cost of that. Tell them, you do it for $3,000. It's a new lowboy. We can't do that, huh?
There is actually a dedicated staff out of the Sackin Dogga Field Office, but it'll be mostly consolidating some stuff that we're not going to take in the new office.
No, no, I said not, not as part of their job. I'm saying as additional gap money.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to run that down for you, Mr. Regan.
I'll tell you, it's well worth it what they're charging because I helped move up the office.
That was a dumb thought. It's a funny case that you're having. Again, I need a resolution authorizing that expenditure of up to $5,500 for moving expenses.
I would gladly make that decision.
All right, so we have a first and a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to staff and committee reports, government, governance committee report, Mr. Candido.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several resolutions that the governance committee has approved to move to the full board for its approval. So, I'll start with motion to, we, we made, we have a resolution in front of the full board that we recommend approval of the investment policy. Mr. Meneshia has, and he can provide any questions, any questions in the room.
We have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
I think we had all the discussion in the committee, so I'll call for a vote, unless there is some questions. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut off the debate. If not, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Continuing, the governance committee recommends to the board the approval of the resolution that is on our procurement policy as presented by Mr. Meneshia.
Do I have a motion to that effect? I will, I will again make that motion. Second? Second?
I will.
And again, any further questions? We had discussed this in committee. Any further, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Once again, we have a resolution that was, is put forward to the board that was approved by the governance committee that recommends approval of the property guidelines as presented by Mr. Meneshia.
I need a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Do we have a second to that motion?
I will. Mr. Hayes, Mr. Bird.
Again, most of the discussion was done during committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Candido.
The, trying to keep track here on my iPad. I think I've lost some track. Number four, thank you. Motion, we, the governance committee has approved and recommends to the full board its approval of the, did I say the property guidelines? I want, we started with the procurement, we're doing the property guidelines.
An annual review of mission statement and performance.
Thank you. So, the governance committee has performed, has conducted its annual review of the mission statement and performance measures and recommends to the full board for their approval.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Duett.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to five, resolution approving the Seventh Amendment. Go ahead.
The governance committee has approved recommending to the board the adoption of the Seventh Amendment to the ground lease and water usage agreement at Stillwater.
Again, motion to that effect?
I will.
Do we have a second? Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Kids are mixing it up.
All in favor?
I don't know if I can second.
Any opposed? Next, any issue?
I apologize because I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm not looking at my supplemental. So, my memory tells me that we, we approved.
This is fair. This is an authorization for the executive director to hire the most qualified candidate for the maintenance specialist position in Hudson River area.
Thank you very much. That was approved and recommended for approval to the full board.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, the resolution to hire laborers to supplement permanent staff in the Hudson River area and Black River area.
That resolution, that resolution was adopted for approvals to recommend it to go to the board.
Mr. Regan, move.
Second?
I will.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Candido. Next, the finance committee report, Mr. Duett.
The finance committee approved the resolution approving the budget and finance plan required pursuant to services, to service, to section 2801 of the public authority law.
I make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Regan, Ms. Allen.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We move on to the audit committee report, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Duett. Sorry. Oh, I guess that's me. We met in the audit committee report, we had a revision to audit his financial statement. We had a resolution to award audit services work to the Lernus Robinson Certified Public Accountants, LLP, for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023.
Do I have a motion on that resolution?
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Richard.
Second. I could second that. I second that.
Any further discussion?
I have a competition today.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We move on to general counsel, Mr. Leslie.
I won't quote Robert Frost, but I will also agree. We continue to work with Stillwater Associates to address the, what I refer to, open agreement. The appraisal firm has, should be back soon with the fair market appraisal. The, we have reported or prepared and submitted a petition to FERC. Irialta submitted a petition. We submitted an answer to their petition. They submitted an answer to our petition, and we're now waiting for FERC to rule on whether the Federal Power Act, Section 10F, headwater benefit charges are duplicative of the amount that Erie pays the regulating district for the use of its property interest for 56 feet of head created by the Conklinville Dam. We had several comments. We appreciate the community members who came out in support of the regulating district. And I'd say as the record doc officer, we have addressed two of three for requests during the reporting period, and the last one came in.
Any questions, comments, or thoughts? Thank you very much. Next, Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report begins on page 99. During the reporting period, I performed the quarterly compliance audit. Proper accounting procedures are in place, and I continue to monitor and audit the asset renewal database to ensure reporting and accounting as we speak. I compared and surveyed our annual MWVE and SE BOB goals, and on pages 100 to 102 are the contract status sheets that are there for your review and satisfy the public authority requirement under section 2879. That completes my report. If you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Thank you very much. I'd like to point out, even though it's printed here, I got your title right the first time.
Thank you.
Next, Chief Fiscal Officer, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the CFO report on page 103 of your packet. I'm happy to report the regulating district's cash position remains strong, which combined the bank deposits and stiff investments roughly 49% higher than they were at the same time last year. I can also report that we have submitted documents to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation relating to the Indian Lake project. This initial step of listing the project on EFC's intended use plan refers to the process of seeking financing, be it the clean water state revolving fund. Given all the talking I've done today, I'm going to stop and offer any questions you have about any aspect of the regulating district's finance.
One thing, Albany Parking Authority, just curious, it just popped up at me. What was that for?
For us to be able to park our vehicles at the office of Kirnen Plaza.
They're charging for that?
Yeah.
Or new?
Our new, our new office will also be served by an Albany Parking Authority garage, just a different one.
I guess I won't, we visit another there all the time.
Any other questions or comments or requests? Thank you very much.
For all your. Guess that's one way to figure it out.
Chief Engineer, Mr. Fulton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report is obviously written for the March fifteenth meeting, summarizes through February, but I'm just going to, uh, make note of a, a couple of snowstorms that we had in the beginning of March, which, um, loaded us, loaded the wet, uh, watersheds, uh, the rest of the way, I guess you could say. Gave us a, uh, close to historic average snowpack and water contents, and, uh, and here we are, uh, now in the first, uh, few days of the refilling in the fresh, uh, across, across the board and all the reservoirs. Uh, we're seeing inflows increase and, uh, as these temperatures melting off a lot of the snow, and they're still in the northern half of our watersheds still quite a bit, but, um, we are well positioned to receive all those waters. So, um, the only other thing I, in, in my report that I would like to just point out is, uh, some of the highlights from, uh, Hawkinsville and the effort that's going on in Hawkinsville, which is, uh, for the better part of two months, I think has been spent on revising, uh, a, a method for retaining soil on the west bank, which I, I discussed previously, uh, on a, in, I think in the February report. Um, and, and the contractor, uh, gave us several rounds of designs and, and we actually, drilled several holes for the shoring, uh, only to discover that rock was not located where we anticipated it or had hoped it to be. So we had to revise further. They gave us a second revision, a third revision. We are in the fourth revision of the shoring plan. Uh, and have.
Fourth and final.
I believe this is, that's right, fourth and final. This fourth revision now satisfies our engineers', uh, hopes and expectations. And, and we give us, uh, the finished product that we wanted to start with. And, uh, we're, we're hopeful next week, uh, that the contractor will begin installing that permanent sheet, sheeting and, and uh, pile lagging wall for shoring to allow the rest of the concrete construction, which includes the spillway extension and the, uh, abutment, which includes a new outlet structure and, uh, a short cutoff, concrete cutoff wall. But, uh, he's not looking for more money yet. Uh.
Oh, yes, that has been part of the discussion.
Oh, yes.
And how, how is that going to work? Because if, last time we talked about it, we said the scope hasn't changed any, so the scope's the same. You go out and you bid a project.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, you come back in and the scope hasn't changed any, but now they're saying cost, give more money.
The scope has changed now.
Right, right. The, the scope has changed as a result of revisions to the shoring. Um, that has affected both the concrete structures and, uh, the process envisioned initially at the time of bidding for retaining or excavating that west. Okay, so when the, when the scope changed, then did we get a new price on what was going to cost? We received estimates. Yeah.
And this is, I think we've, we've talked in the past, Mr. Reagan, about, you know, we're, we're in, on one hand, we, we're talking about our, our engineering consultant, client Schmidt. And who, which did not include this shoring component to the project in the design. And the contractor, E S G, and we've had a lot of, uh, discussions with those two companies and internally. Uh, and I think there'll be, there'll be a lot. So we'll be, we'll be coming back to the board in, in May.
So we'll have a bunch of detail and stuff.
Yes, yes.
Again, I just, I just sit there and say, it's a, a bid process that we go out for. And I originally, what we asked, I asked you last time, was there been any scope change? No, there hasn't. And so, you know, we, we had the weather conditions. We probably have had the most open winter I can remember since I've been up here twenty-five years of, of going on, so.
Yeah, the, the.
Just curious.
The shore, the, the shoring is, it's currently designed and will be incorporated into the final project, is a major, ended up being a major scope cha- scope change and is.
But that would go back to the engineering.
Well, I mean, I think we'll have something to, to talk about.
Okay.
With the board going forward from, you know, we'll get into, uh, but certainly in, in, in May, we'll come back to the board because we're not up against the board's initial authorization yet.
Mm-hmm.
But we will be, and we, we're having those conversations about how to pay for this on the one hand. Uh, but we'll need to come back to the board for that additional authorization.
You're kind of hitting that there's a substantial to.
Yeah, it's, it, it is, it's north, north of, for instance, north of four hundred thousand. And, um, and, and that's.
You know, I, you may think I, I'm looking at it from an accountability standpoint or something. And yeah, okay, that's, that's somebody else's job to think about the accountability and that going through. I'm not, I'm not interested in that. Because we've got other projects coming up. I'm more interested in.
You'll hear about one just in a few minutes.
How do we get it right?
Right.
How do we make sure that we've got it right so there's not surprises going on?
Sure.
And then talk about, you know, uh, even from a bidding standpoint, you know, you can have the low bid. But again, if the people aren't able to accomplish what you need to do, again, I don't know how you're represented by all that in your, in your worlds. I don't know what's going on. I'm just curious.
I think we've talked a lot about that as well. Unfortunately, no matter, you know, we'll have some things for the board, I think, to contemplate as far as going back and taking a look very closely at that accountability question. Fortunately, we have the greatest record keeper in the history of New York State government sitting across the table here with, between Mr. Fulton and Mr. Moser and, and Mr. Baker. Uh, we've, we've got a very detailed, comprehensive, uh, uh, recording throughout the whole project of what happened. And, and, and I think we, we certainly have some thoughts about, uh, the, the shortcoming of the design, on the design end, whether or not this shorting, shoring should have been contemplated as, you know, the, I think the, uh, our client Schmidt has indicated that, that it should have been and, and to some extent was, but still not incorporated into the design. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm getting a little too far down the road from, for, uh, for the purposes of this discussion in open session, but, uh, but that's, that's, I think, we'll have, we'll have a lot more to talk, talk to the board about on this project. But certainly at this point, and I, I don't mean to subsume your time here, uh, Mr. Chief Engineer, but the, the, the path for us right now, we have a partially deconstructed and partially constructed dam rehabilitation project. The only path for us right now is successful completion to engineering specs. And I also just want to note briefly, if I can, an appreciation for D E C Dam Safety, who had to review this, uh, design change and gave us a, 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 a approval on a very quick turnaround basis. So we've got, uh, permits pending with them on Indian Lake. So we're, we're, we're hoping for just as, as quick a turnaround, but, you know, a lot of moving parts on this one. I just also want to, uh, want to, uh, laud, uh, Mr. Fulton for staying on top of it because this has not been an easy one. It's not going like any of us want it to so far.
And then the, another thing I would add is just that, you know, while it may have taken us a rather less than straight path to the end result, the work that's being done in the field, what needs to be constructed, ultimately, even, even though we didn't identify the need initially, is in the end exactly what needs to be done. So there is an extra work being done. There isn't, um, um, you know, items being added that had we identified it earlier on would be now unnecessary. So everything that's designed that's going to be constructed is, is what's necessary to, to complete the job. And, and, you know, it just took us a little bit. A little bit longer to get there. The numbers, so.
Yeah.
All right, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Uh, next, the presentation by Bergman on Indian Lake Dam remediation.
So last meeting, if, um, was it Greg Johnson?
Yeah. Yep, yep. Two engineers, uh, Greg Johnson and Todd Mueller.
This Greg?
Should be joining us from Bergman. And I have.
Hello, Greg.
Hi, Greg.
Hello, John. Hello, Rob.
I did print out your slides for the board, Greg, and, uh, so in case we had any technical glitches and it, also so they could follow along. Or read it tonight if they wanted to.
I'm just going to change our view here so you can just see the presentation. It looked like a minute ago you were sharing your screen, Greg, but we don't see it now.
Somebody made me and I was hoping Todd could be the presenter. There he is.
I got it. Got it. Right. Great. All right, so, uh, here in Mayfield, we're seeing your screen, and I hope that's true for other people participating remotely.
It looks good on my end, so if it's okay, I will start.
Looks good, okay, here.
Great. Okay.
All right, so really, a quick, quick introduction. I'm, I'm Greg Johnson. I run what we call the Water Group at Bergman. Dams is a, a major focus of what we do. Um, our history with this project goes back to twenty sixteen, I think it is, and I was the original project manager. As we went into the, the rehabilitation design, uh, Todd Mueller assisted me with that and took over the project. Um, and that's why he's here. So I'm going to start it off, uh, and then we'll go from there. So next slide, Todd. Just going to catch up. So a little, uh, kind of an overview of what we're going to talk about, just a general orientation of the site. And then we'll get into the, the meat of the rehabilitation design, both in terms of the major work items we're doing and the regulatory compliance aspect of it. Then, of course, what you are concerned about is the cost estimate and schedule, so we'll hit those two as well. Go ahead, Todd. And then you can skip that one. So this is an aerial view of the dam. I don't know how familiar everyone is. I know some of you are very familiar with it. But just in general, going from left to right, looking in a downstream direction. Uh, the service spillway is the furthest thing to the left. That is where the water goes over the dam when the reservoir is at a high level, and that's the way the dam was originally designed. Uh, the next thing is what is called the main logway, which is a slot that was used as a, a sluice to sluice logs and debris through the dam. That is closed off right now with a permanent bulkhead gate. Adjacent to that is the gatehouse, which has, um, two five-foot diameter conduits through the dam. And then there's also a, a masonry, um, chamber in front of that that has four timber sluice gates, um, that allow water to get into that chamber and then through the five-foot diameter culverts. The next thing, we call the non overflow dam section. This is the masonry dam. That the crest of that dam is a, basically a walkway to the gatehouse. Uh, the original dam, um, was likely designed for that not to pass water. And then the next thing to the right of that is the earthen embankment, which finishes off the dam on the right side. And there's a little step between the non overflow dam section and the earthen embankment section. And that non overflow dam section will be, uh, important later because one of the things, and I'll just get into that for the rehab design while this picture is on here. One of the things we did to pass the state mandated design storm, which is the half P M F storm, is we allow water to go over that non overflow dam section and use that as a, an auxiliary spillway. So a spillway that's allowed to, to pass flow infrequently, um, but not, um, it's not designed to pass the flow there all the time. Okay, next slide. Um, so a little bit on the compliance issues for the dam, um, which we did as the engineering assessment. And actually, let me go back. The dam, I should have mentioned this. The dam was originally built in eighteen ninety-seven. Uh, it was rehabilitated in nineteen eighty-seven. So you just flip those second two digits from the design to re, or the original to the rehabilitation. And what we should have, we started on the project in twenty fourteen. Um, and we were doing the engineering assessment then. We came up with the rehabilitation alternatives in the twenty sixteen. And then we can, started on the actual rehabilitation design in, in twenty twenty-one. All right, um, so the major regulatory requirements that we, we don't meet for the New York State D E C requirements is in this present condition, we don't have the spillway capacity to pass the design flood without overtopping of the dam, and that design flood is half of the P M F. Um, the downstream slope of that embankment section on the right side is steeper than what the state would, would like. Um, and I believe also that the slope stability numbers don't meet the factors of safety that we'd like to see. Um, and then the dam structure itself, the masonry dam itself does not meet the stability requirements required for the state. And that's particularly for the ice loading case, where there's a sheet of ice and we have an ice forest at the top of the dam. And for the, the flood case, where we have that design storm, that, the half P M F. Um, while we're out there, we're also addressing some maintenance and operational issues with our rehabilitation. And that's mainly, I think, what everybody is familiar with at the dam, which is the seepage and leakage through the masonry. Um, the exterior, the, and then I talked about the gates at the gatehouse, those, um, sluice gates. Those gates are actually timber gates, and I think the last time anything was done with those was in the nineteen eighty-seven rehab where they actually, I replaced them. We have pictures of, of them replacing those timber gates, but that's certainly not, uh, modern technology and those gates, some of them are completely inoperable now, and they certainly don't work like a, a, um, a modern dam structure should work. And what that means is you can't close that area off if you have to work on the main gate valves that, that operate for the five-foot diameter culvert. So if you ever had an issue there, you would have a no means to, to stop that flow and, and repair anything. Um, we also have, uh, access, uh, the walkway bridge on the left side of the dam has handrails only on one side. It's an old timber structure that's somewhat supported by, uh, steel. Um, so that isn't really the current code. It's an, it's really not safe for the, for the staff working out there. And then the last thing is that main logway, um, with those stoplogs, and that is not operable. And in and of itself, that may not be, um, the biggest issue. Um, but during construction, as you'll see, we need that main logway to accomplish the work, so we are going to put in an operable gate in there. So next slide, Todd. And this is into the design, which I kind of may have talked about already. There we see the, the, the seepage through the dam, which is in and of itself, it, it looks like a major concern, but I would consider that less of a major concern. Over the long term, that's an issue and, and repairing it certainly is something that we should do. But it, it looks more concerning than it, it actually is to me. Um, so we have the embankment stability improvements, the structural stability, the leakage, the operational improvements, the operational logway gate, the spillway bridge replacement. We're also going to put a new debris boom out there. Rather than the, the timber structure, we're going to use a modern, um, uh, roto molded plastic H D P E type debris boom that should be much easier for them to maintain. Um, we have the site, site access and safety improvements with some railing and some fencing. And then, uh, per D E C request, we're adding some minor work to create a lake access trail. Next slide, Todd. All right, so then in terms of the embankment stability improvements, uh, I'm going to talk about a couple of things, and then I'm going to let Todd take over on the remainder of the rehabilitation. So in terms of the embankment, the big, the big things we're doing there is again, I mentioned flattening the slope to maintain the slope stability. So you can see that kind of, that new slope is a one, one vertical, two and a half horizontal versus the old slope, which is approximately, uh, it, it's steeper than that. It's, it's a little bit non-uniform. It's a little bit. it's steeper than that, it's a little bit non-uniform, it's a little bit, so the new slope will be flatter which will meet the DEC's requirements. The other added benefit, it's gonna be a lot easier for the maintenance staff to maintain, keep mode and that type of stuff. We're gonna raise the embankment a foot to keep the dam from overtopping in that design storm. We're also gonna raise the core wall, we're actually gonna raise the core wall a couple feet because the core wall was held down and that has proven to be an issue for some other dams recently, Edenville being one of them. So we'll raise that to the top so we won't have an issue there and we will also add this overtopping protection, armoring of the slope there which is, will help prevent issues with driving maintenance vehicles up there, some running that happens and then added benefit is that we can protect the dam for some flood events that exceed what the state mandated half PMF storm is. Just because the state mandates that you design for the half PMF doesn't mean that mother nature can't give you the .6 PMF, so this will provide some additional protection. And then we're also putting at the toe, a toe drain and a blanket filter, that's modern dam design, it captures seepage and it protects the dam against a piping failure. Okay, I think that's it for that one. Because we're raising the embankment and we're flattening the slope, we have a masonry retaining wall that's shown over there on the right, Todd is showing that. It actually shows the new layout that we have, but there's a masonry retaining wall that retains that embankment. Because we're raising the embankment and flattening it, we need to raise the wall and lengthen the wall. Because we don't have good records on that wall, we, our new wall is designed as an independent structure to carry all the load that that wall would have taken. So we're putting a concrete facing on the masonry, we're anchoring it back with rock anchors that have steel casing around it so we're not loading the existing masonry wall, those anchors will go in, we post tension them to apply force to them so that the wall can't deflect. This wall in and of itself was very complex and complicated to design for several reasons, one of which, as we look at the section there, when we drill these rock anchors in, based on some physometer measurements that we got as we were doing the design, we were concerned that as we were drilling those anchors in, we might end up having to have water coming out of the anchor holes. So we were putting the anchors in only either through the masonry for that lowest row of anchors or above where the free attic surface, the water level within the embankment is on the dam. So that was a, we had to manipulate our design as that information came in. Discussion right before this presentation was interesting, so let me go over the, this wall design. We also have to excavate in front of the wall in order to support the vertical weight of the wall. Because we don't know anything about this existing masonry wall and we have basically an unknown, we're guessing at the rock level at the toe of this wall, what we have done is we've put secan piles which are drilled in concrete, large diameter concrete piers so that we don't have to excavate, there's no excavation shoring that the contractor has to do, we can do that while the soil is there without issue. So that's how we support the vertical load of the wall and that will accommodate variations in the rock level which is a good thing. So because that rock level is unknown, this provides us a lot more flexibility than if we had tried to excavate down and if we found unforeseen conditions, it would be a bigger deal than using this system. And then the last complicating piece of this wall is because of what I talked about is we can only put the anchors in certain elevations, the capacity of the concrete wall in terms of spreading the load out to the anchors exceeded where we wanted to go with the concrete design and what we essentially, what we ended up doing was using what's called a soldier pile wall which is essentially in those secan piles, we put steel, vertical steel wide flan sections or H pile sections that then can transfer the load vertically from the wall into the rock anchors. So this is maybe, I think it's probably the most complex piece of the job, but that was complex in design, I think the construction should allow for more flexibility in terms of unforeseen conditions in terms of what's out there at the site. So a lot of time and planning went into this and hopefully that's gonna pay off, I'm knocking on wood during construction. And with that, I think I can turn it over to Todd.
Hey, just one question on that, why wouldn't you drill to find out what's in the base of that wall? It's just, you're not able to do that, it's impossible to do it because of the, there's no way to get to it or what? So you knew exactly what you had and you were holding on.
You're right, this is one of those things where we did some drilling in terms of, for the engineering assessment of the dam before we knew what the rehabilitation would be. So our drilling program for the engineering assessment handled what we needed to do that work. For us to go back and drill again would have been an additional expense getting out there, I can't remember what the cost was off the top of my head Rob, but it's always a trade off is do you do more exploration so that you can hone in more on your design or you do, do you make your design more accommodating for those unforeseen conditions? And the decision was made to go with the more flexible design as we were right in the midst of doing the design and that would have, you know, as we were going through this, to stop design, go out and do the borings would have slowed the project down as well.
Greg, I'll also chime in that when we're looking at this, we don't know what the original construction assembly of that wall on the backfill was. Right, best expectation would be that they came up together, so even if we know where rock is, we may not be able to safely excavate in front of it to go to a more traditional design because it wouldn't be safe to unload that fill from the wall.
Right.
All we would do is we would tighten up the quality, we wouldn't necessarily change the sequence of work, so we would still need nearly as robust a design, we would just have a higher resolution on the profile of the rock.
Right.
Thank you.
Welcome. Alright, so Greg did go over the really complex parts, I'm gonna go over some of the more traditional dam rehab pieces, so traditional dam rehab perhaps not traditional construction. What we have going on are a lot of post tensioned anchors throughout the rest of the dam, but not known over spillway or in the spillway section and actually right next to the log sluice, we've got anchoring going in to bring things into compliance with those loads from ice and flood cases. The anchorheads will be recessed down in, so you won't actually see them after the work is done, they get capped over and we still have the same flat surface at the top over in the non overflow and they'll be embedded within the piers over in the spillway section. So all that drilling and grouting for installation of those is planned to happen, that brings us into the major compliance for stability, sliding and overturning of the dam. Additional drilling going on will be consolidation grouting, this is one of those main items to cut off the leakage that we see over at the non overflow section and it also applies over at the left side next to the spillway where we've got leakage coming out through the corner, so we're gonna do a couple rounds of drilling and grouting, putting that grout in, filling those interior voids and provide some additional cutoff beyond just putting any surface repairs at the upstream and downstream sides.
I just went on that, on the complete with reservoir lowered bullet, that means it'll, that work will be done at a time when the elevation of the reservoir is lowered, it would not, it would not otherwise drain the reservoir to do the work, but this whole, it's a scheduling issue.
Correct, we're keeping this within the time of the normal drawdowns in the fall and winter period, targeting that happening and the purpose behind that is so that we don't have increased head and washout potential of the grout going in, it's got the best potential for going in and at least numbers of regrouding required.
Right, and that's an important, I think that's a very important point that you bring up John, just to reiterate, this project, our design is done to do the work in the normal operating pool conditions of your reservoir, so anything with the reservoir drawn down, that's in your, during your normal drawdown period, we're not proposing to adjust that.
Thank you. The additional work to address the leakage throughout the dam is repointing.
Yeah, that's hard to do.
Repointing and grouting throughout, this is upstream, downstream, above and below water, so comprehensive work to repoint all those very old stone masonry joints, this, you don't need to study this clip, this is just an example from the dive inspections of the amount and degree of joint deterioration you have, so if there's not much left in this, between the stones, the water goes right through, basic principles, so this will be comprehensive work and give you a good long protection and lifetime out of the repairs. The other work Greg talked about briefly was working at the valve house here, so we've got replacing these exterior manually cranked sluice gates, putting an operating platform in so the guys have safe access to walk out there if they need to do any work on the electrically powered motors, providing safe walking space and clearances, no tie offs, good handrail, all compliant, your standard approaches and then of course the floor replacement of the gates themselves so that you can operate these on push button methodologies, electrical service, we're using the existing electrical and just expanding from the box, bringing things on through to get that easy operability, no hand cranking and now you can be able to routinely exercise and operate the gates so that you don't have this long life of them sitting in place and becoming inoperable or just concerned about unable to operate later due to the age of the gates and then never being operated, so easier maintenance and operation. Next to the gatehouse, we have the main log sluice, will be turning this from a passive stoplogged piece into an active gate that is operational and this will primarily came out because we need to add this control in order to do the construction work on the other valves, so taking those valves out of service, need to maintain your minimum flows and in order for the district to keep control over all the flow being passed, we're looking at an operable gate here instead of these passive logs, currently there's no means to move any of them out, we'll go and do fine regulation control, this is getting a floor replacement with lining of concrete through the whole piece, then a stack and a, adding a frame to bring this back up, the frame will be able, this is truncated a little bit, it's taller, so that'll lift that fully out and have you full opening and this actually goes back to the original construction a little more closely which had a frame here for lifting vertical needles in and out when they were passing flow to move timbers through from the reservoir to the downstream. So shipper was not complained about this change and it looks like it should be fine for permitting approvals. Other things being done, the existing bridge has reached its end of useful service life, it's very dated, it's a mix of timber and steel, so that's getting taken out, it's also given us access to put post tensioned anchors in through each of these caps which will help us meet stability requirements on the spillway when it's hit with the ice loads and flood loads. So ridge comes out and we'll put a new fully galvanized steel bridge back in, meeting current codes, it'll have railings on the upstream and the downstream side to current standards and it'll be all galvanized, no paint here, so your minimum requirements are met for having to do any maintenance in the future, galvanizer will last longer than painted but we're not going all the stainless, that's more than a pretty penny, this is the middle ground I think we talked about with Rob. And as Greg noted, we'll give you a modern boom.
Just for games.
Greg did note, we're gonna go to a modern trash boom here, minor, I mean overall it's an upgrade but some more functionality and instead of tying off to the trees which I believe is how the existing chains are in, we're gonna give you actual anchor points and this will have design failure links for maximum loads coming through and all that if it's got a load of debris during a flood, so just a current version, durable, easier to maintain and move. And the minor work for the DEC here, access trail coming around, just using the parking area, going around the right or the dam in their usual pieces of timber steps, cleaning up the path a little bit, see the rough alignment and they've got their nice little standard signs and things that they like for public use. Again, don't need to study this table but this is how we're meeting the compliance for what was previously recognized as shortcomings under the engineering assessment, so major features are being changed to bring things in and meet the criteria that we know. These were all presented to DEC before, we've not yet actually heard the full acceptance but that is in our review. So final idea of what the site plan is, this is not significantly different from what you look like right now, but it is substantially stronger and way more safe for the overall dam performance here. Spillway's getting anchored, you've got safer access for the crews coming out this way, they'll need to at least get the log booms, I think the routine observations come out here, you're gonna have an operable gate here in the log sluice, so you're gonna be able to pass flows, this will give you service both for construction and in the future, provides additional capacity for above the hundred year flood and it gives you options if you wanna do maintenance on either of these gates, you now have a second place to pass flow, so you can do safe access in the valve wells leaving, both need to be closed or one or the other needs to be closed for upstream work. So you've got way more flexibility and a modern approach and redundancy going on there. Of course the anchoring of the spillway, the new wall, anchored wall and raising the embankment here and you know, that runs all the way out, you've got the minor aspects of work then with fences and railings and all that good work for the guys getting in and out and looking clean and sharp. So what everybody really wants to know, the cost estimate. So I didn't give you the 55 items that we broke this down into for the proposed contractor bidding, that is painful to look at and I love cost estimates, so here's the major items rolling up. The major work here in the top four is the bringing things into compliance, so that two, one, one, two, four and four, it's about 4.1 million is the major work to get just into compliance for the DC dam safety, anchoring the walls, raising the embankment, getting drainage and armoring in there, grouting of things, getting the bridges up and functional. These next couple items are loosely, can be discussed as the items to give you better operations and access and compliance, not railings but the rest of the features, the gate operable, new bridges, that kind of stuff, so that one and a half million gives you the confidence in the items that you need operate and run daily, you'll be in good shape for a good long time. Many of these are way past their service life, like the OKGates on the valve house, mostly inoperable, so now you've got full operations and new pieces all throughout, easy to run. And the 800K here for repointing stone masonry, this is your long lifetime item, I don't think this has had a full repointing in the history, we saw there worked on the 80s, has done occasional touches here and there, none of the major work, I think they placed the fill and they did gatework, there's not been an attempt to really fix that leakage in a real sense. Then the last 1.3 million here is our miscellaneous of everything, this is electrical upgrades, debris boom, site fencing, mobilization's a big part of that, that comes and supports many of those other items, you just have a difficult area to get to, you're not right next to the roads, it's not as bad as some of the dams but it is not easy and we've got a lot of specialty work between drillers and anchoring and grouting, the earthwork is the easy part, but everything else requires significant equipment, so mobilization and access are significant efforts in this one. Oh, usual disclaimers, these are our estimates right now, contractors have not been consulted on specifics and items and all that good stuff, but we have confidence these values are reasonable.
What contingency have you built into it?
At this point, the design contingency is less than 5%, we bring that down from early to now. I would have to look to see if we added, what are escalations are, should be two years at, three to 4% will be normal, it's been a lot worse than that lately, I'd have to pull out the details to speak to it specifically, but that's baked into these items and spread across them right now.
But the only thing that you have contingency in now is just the design?
Separate from a construction contingency?
No, so what he means by design contingency is we have 5% on everything, that's what we've assumed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, so in general you've got a 5% contingency on the 7.7 million, right, driven by the level of detail, I forget, yeah, I'm understanding, yeah.
And just to disclaim it, so we've refined it a little more than that, we actually weighed contingency higher on steel items than on concrete and earthwork items, but you've got a lot of steel and work here, so it's, we didn't apply, we did put some extra reference in there but I'd have to get the whole estimate up, like I said, there's 50 something items in this, so.
Todd, do you remember how fresh this estimate is, when's the last time we looked at it? Do you remember how fresh the estimate is? When's the last time we looked at it? In terms of the way the economy's been going recently?
The major update was done in December with the D C submission. We did a quick look as we were getting ready for this about two months ago. But we did not, we've not baked in any major inflation and escalation items for the economy. We did back down post COVID fluctuations that we saw. This was starting to stabilize as the economy has gone a little haywire. So that's where my standard engineering disclaimer is. I don't know what the contractors are going to do six months, 12 months from now. So we do the best we can to forecast that.
And with the five percent.
But sorry, go ahead.
With the five percent, with the five percent, you feel pretty good about your engineering then?
Yes, we've got confidence in the engineering design is complete here. It's market conditions that we really can't forecast.
Yeah.
The conditions right now are, are about as crazy as we've seen with the amount of work that everybody's trying to do. So it, it's very difficult to estimate things right now.
Right. And this overall contract does dictate a lot of schedule, which I will go to next year for the contractors, things that have to happen one before the other. And, but we don't dictate means and methods as a general principle. I mean, they have to provide a post tensioned anchor. That's a post tensioned anchor. But what crews, equipment and approach they use to do this stuff is as always contractor decided. So that's to give you the best chance of a efficient bidder. But we do have a lot of requirements on this. They don't have a lot of leeway to pick and choose something else. They can propose value engineering, but there's not a lot of our knowledge, oversights or open pieces for them to really pick. They get to submit a design of the deck that goes around the valve house. But we've said, here's the loads, here's the steel. You just have to give us the details so they can get a fabric here that they like to get that out right on time. And then like I said, the schedule. So permitting is underway with the agencies. D C has had a package since January. We had a one meeting call with them. A few of the small groups had minor comments that have been uh, taken and addressed and responded to, but the major comments from the dam safety have not been received. Trying to communicate with them, but they do what they want. I think you guys are familiar with communicating there. So we're going to keep working with them, uh, try to keep this as a priority item. Um, but their approvals are a critical path towards getting a letting going this year. Once we have their comments, we can finalize the dress to let things, the target is to do that by summer. That fits for your schedules and theirs. And then the target is for work to start this fall, mid summer, early fall award. Um, we're noting here that there are a number of long lead and critical path items, things that once the contractors are on board, they need to start ordering right away. Those are again presented to them. They shouldn't have issues with this, but it also ties into the sequencing where we were talking about the lower reservoir levels that fall, winter work are not fluctuating away from your usual curve, but we are saying these things need to be done lower. So they need to be attentive to that work. Putting the anchoring stump removals and things like that. Um, and some pieces have to happen before the other. You need a retaining wall before you can do embankment fill behind it. So all these things are dictated. There's extensive notes in this contract package directing contractors to look at this stuff. This is an overall schedule. Don't need to digest it and understand it in full, but how we are looking at items that need to happen earlier or later. Those long lead items that they need to be procuring, then stuff that can get going right away, mobilization, getting going on foundations, concrete work for the bulkhead so that they've got that operation later. Uh, trees having to happen after November first with bats. All that's been recognized with our D C permits. We anticipate a winter shutdown, although they could do some work if they chose to do tenting and heating. Some concrete work could happen around the logs loose. And then we expect the big effort would be in the first summer season, next summer, cofferdams or dive work happening where again, it's up to them if they want to install small cofferdams. Use divers exclusively. Uh, the work can be satisfactorily performed either way. It's what contractor thinks is efficient. And then that rolls into the gatehouse work, stems, embankment work and after the walls. I don't need to read every detail to you. I'm sure my best guess, the contractors will certainly take a Sharpie too and readjust, but we feel there's, it's reasonable. It's a two season job. Uh, one season would be very busy, but would be contractor got there, we would be happily surprised. But we think that's very optimistic with the sequence of work done with lowered pools and what has to happen in the form of even foresee. Okay. That is our dog and pony show. Uh, we do appreciate your time here. And if there's more questions, Greg and I are happy to keep talking.
I don't have any values to throw. Any, anybody here on the board have any questions, comments they'd like to? If not, I will thank you for your presentation.
Rob, one thing I, I think important to point out, it's sort of one half of, uh, Mr. Reagan's question before. One of the significant differences in this project versus Hawkinsville is going into it. We've got built in with Bergman dedicated construction administration and inspection full time, which we did not have at Hawkinsville, then not, uh, related to all of the issues we've had at Hawkinsville and some of the, but some of the issues in terms of workflow and onsite management and schedule. So that's one of, one component that is significantly different in this project than, than with Hawkinsville.
Yeah. And, and I don't want to go down too far a rabbit hole, but you've got a normal, uh, meeting where you're meeting with the contractors on a continuous basis that's set up at Hawkinsville or any of the projects. So there's updates and stuff. I mean, normal project management.
Are you following those things? And Indian Lake is the, probably an order of magnitude more complex than Hawkinsville is.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, the one thing I would note is that we would anticipate board action on a, on a bid in order to keep the schedule that Greg and Todd had shown uh, by mobilization by late summer. Probably realistically no earlier than the first week in September, uh, that we would ask for the board to approve or award by July board meeting. If earlier, the, the better, but, uh, that will depend partially on whether or not we need to get a contract document together and big documents.
And that takes care of the long lead items that they're talking about that will, they will still be able to.
That's starting by, Greg addressed that, and I think that's what their schedule indicated that, um, that if we start by the end of the summer or September, they would.
You don't have anything like long lead money where you go out ahead of the project being approved and everything to get those long lead items. That's not something that you guys would do?
No, you're talking about purchasing, pre purchasing on behalf of a contractor.
Under long lead? Okay. I just, yeah, you don't have that option. We may have some H piles lying around that we could use.
We actually, to talk to you about that, we have some H piles.
I just want to note also, I, I think, uh, Todd and, and Greg both mentioned it. It's certainly been a topic of discussion internally. You know, D C, uh, dam safety permit approval is sort of a critical path. D C's got an environmental permit too, but we think probably the dam safety, there's probably more of a bandwidth issue. We've read in the Times Union the last couple of years, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of, uh, dam safety work to be done and it all goes through a very narrow sort of approval pipeline. Uh, but we've got a great, as indicated with Hawkinsville, great relationship there, a great working relationship with D C. They've been very responsive on, on other issues. So we're, we're hoping that, uh, we can keep this on track, this approval process, because that really will dictate whether we can meet the schedule.
Yeah. Does the A P A have any jurisdiction on this project?
It is within the park, uh, but, uh, we don't, um, don't require, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know if Rob or Rob, you can address that, but I can't, I can't think of what permitting role they would have here. It's not a new use in development. Certainly it's an existing facility that we're.
They assume a lot of jurisdiction on a lot of projects.
I know our permit coordinator has talked with A P A and they've been in discussion. I don't think they had any major roadblocks.
Okay. That's good. Thank you, Todd. Any other comments or questions? And otherwise, I could guys.
I guess the only thing that I would say is also on the financing side of things, obviously, uh, as more information and progress gets made here, we'll be back, uh, to seek approval for financing. Package you took important steps today to make sure that our team with these contract amendments, that our debt team are, remains engaged. Uh, this is not, this is a project that we, the regulating district, the Hudson River area specifically will be financing. Given the, the nature of our security pledges and our statute. I mentioned that we have already submitted based on this information, uh, first step to go back to E F C, uh, because they know us and how we work. Uh, and you know, we're going to obviously pursue every option to get the best terms and conditions for the financing of this project. And, uh, undoubtedly, uh, given the amount of money that we're talking about, this is going to be some combination of pay as you go. Uh, and, uh, debt financing. And as I mentioned, based on our current cash position, we, we have worked hard to to achieve that kind of flexibility, uh, for this, given the, the nature of where, uh, long-term interest rates are, you know, at this stage.
Very good. Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Enjoy.
It's wonderful. Um, any other board member questions or comments?
Hey, I, I've got one thing I want to bring up. I brought up. I brought up goals. I brought up goals and talked about goals. And so, uh, and why I thought goals need to be measurable and why they need to cascade through an organization. And for, so for example, one of, uh, the goals we have for pride, public safety. Okay. That's under John. So then if you think about Rob's goal, Rob's goal is to make sure that the dams are functioning properly. And so all the, uh, all the equipment on him and stuff is functioning as designed. That would be his goal. So we have a dam up there that doesn't have equipment that's working properly. You guys may have all been aware of that and stuff. I didn't know anything about that. But I wouldn't because I haven't been in there all the time. But the nice thing about goals and stuff, and if you have them aligned and that, and then when John comes and reports them out, if we have a gap and we have goals that are measurable, we can get right down to, okay, why aren't they, did we not give enough money to, to be able to do it? Have we not gone out and figured out how we need to take care of it? And I think that would be something that falls back on the board because it's a bigger question. Because if they had the money, they would have done it. I guess, I'm guessing. I'm only guessing. And they would add them fixed, or they would have said it's not necessary. And if that's the case, then why are we designing it into the scope now of going on?
Well, yeah, it, I mean.
So.
As, as with all of our facilities, uh, it, it's taken 15 years.
Yeah.
To get to this point.
Yeah.
They've been identified more than 15 years. The, uh, lack of functionality, um, and inoperability of equipment has been known from day one. Uh, unfortunately, it's taken this long to get to the point where we can actually make those repairs, but based on the length of time.
That's why. That's why I'm such a person on goals of having them measurable and stuff. Because you get back to, I call it one throat to choke. So there's, it's because you look around, nobody's, nobody's accountable for it. Well, if you get back to the goals and you get to that one person, okay, you're the person that's accountable and then pushing it back up through the organization. I'm sorry. I just wanted to. But you're using, using that as an example of where we can do better on that. I think that's the ongoing conversation. That's all I'm trying to do. I've given an example of where and why you want them measurable.
Roger that. Okay. Anything else? Good point. Um, any other board member questions or comments? Uh, resolution for our next meeting on what, when is it?
May ninth.
May ninth.
Probably.
Where, yeah, TBD, we're, we're looking at the availability, uh, Mr. Chairman of the, the Laugel office, which is very, very well equipped from an I T perspective. Lots of room and.
Okay.
That might be, but Black River.
Where's the Laugel office?
Well, the Laugel Kelly office.
Undisputed. At 1223. We have a motion, uh, then to, uh, extend the next board meeting on May ninth. We have, we have a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Second, please get me out of here. All the favorites.
Hi.
Uh, resolution to adjourn. Very early. Yeah. Uh, second. We are adjourned. Now we have, um, ethics training.
What we'll do is we'll ask, uh, yeah, take a break. We've got some food, but, uh, primarily, uh, let's ask, uh, making the, end the recording and ask the members to hang on just a minute.